Of the day, the Committee on General Government Appropriation and Housing is now called to order. Today is Friday, May 29th, and the time now is 2:01. Notes for the public hearing were disseminated via email to all centers, all media, main media broadcasting outlets on Thursday, May 21st, and Wednesday, May 27th. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience and accommodating the Zoom platform while we maintain health, emergency, physical distancing mandates. On the agenda is Bill 358-35 sponsored by Vice Speaker Senator Talina Cruz Nelson, an act to add new section 32120.1 to Chapter 32 of Title 10 Guam Code Annotative relative to codifying the Governor's Executive Order 2020-08. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues here today, and we have Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, we have Vice Speaker Talina Cruz Nelson, we have Senator Kelly Marsh Titanel, we have Senator Amanda Shelton, our Lieutenant Secretary, we also have now Senator Peter Turley, we have Senator Therese Turley, and we have Minority Leader Senator Telo Tadegui, we have Senator Mary Comontse Torres. Ma'am, we have Senator Will Castro. And we have, I think Senator James Wollin is trying to get online now. The rules of conduct, the Zoom meeting is hosted by our staff, and will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by myself. Members of the committee and/or Lieutenant, wishing to speak may indicate their desire to the chair through the in-app chat feature. Individuals testifying shall be first recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Committee members will be allowed to pose questions to any individual that is testifying, and unfortunately, we don't have anybody that's logged into testify by Zoom, but we have received testimony from Mr. Ken Young, who is opposing all four bills today. And moving along on that, the questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. My colleagues will be talking about an addressing Bill 358-35. Please read your notes, your physical notes and everything, and be aware of and listen to just that agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in a move from the public hearing by the host. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in other activities during the hearing. Failure to maintain visibility may cause your move from the meeting livestream. I'd like to ask and invite Vice Speaker Senator Nelson to, and we also have Senator Wollin, he's on now, to provide a synopsis or a bill or an introduction of her bill. Madam Vice Speaker.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Bill number 358-35 is an act to adding new subsection 32120.1 to Chapter 32 of Title 10 Guam Code Annotative relative to codifying the Governor's Executive Order 2020-08. It discusses the main purpose of the bill is to have the ability to retroactively give those responders during the COVID-19 emergency hazardous pay. And the different categories of hazardous pay is category one, 25% of hazardous pay differential will be given to essential employees who in the course of their duties in direct contact or in close physical proximity to a population infected with or may be reasonably suspected to be infected with COVID-19. Such positions may include but not be limited to sworn public safety and law enforcement officers, healthcare providers, and other positions performing essential critical mission duties. Category two is 15% hazardous pay differential to essential employees who in the course of their duties may incidentally come into contact with or close physical proximity to a population infected with or may be reasonably suspected to be infected with COVID-19. These employees may also be providing humanitarian services or direct public assistance to the general public. 10% hazardous pay differential to essential employees whose position do not allow them to telework and are mandated to perform their job duties at physical work sites predetermined by their agency heads as required by the government of Guam's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Unclassified employees working in the office of the governor and the office of the lieutenant governor, agency directors, and deputy directors shall not be eligible for COVID-19 hazardous pay differentials except for such circumstances where assigned duties require an exposure level of risk defined in categories one and two. And so, Mr. Chair, the retroactive piece will be to March 14, 2020, that is before the executive order where the governor signed an executive order allowing different types of hazardous pay with these categories. I understand that there have been employees that fulfill these categories that have been given hazardous pay at these different types of percentages depending on their exposure. And although we don't have anyone really testifying via Zoom, I understand that there are some emails that will be sent to your committee in testimony of Bill 358. We'd also like to note the President of the Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce, who supported this bill and who did not support the previous bill, Bill 357. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker Senator Nelson. I'd like to also recognize that Senator, former Senator Robert Kiskas also submitted testimony in favor of any of the bills, and you're correct. Thank you. Is there, Madam Speaker, being that we have no one that's zoomed in to testify, Madam Speaker, do you have any questions you would like to pose under the author of the bill? And just to let everybody know, we did contact BBMR, and they stated that number one, their physical note is their testimony. So that's why we need to refer to that. And the Attorney General and DOA, I'm going to, he advised us that they're heading to the court because of their hearing, I think it's about the double pay that's going on right now. And I've been trying to get a hold of the Attorney General's office for anyone to chime in, but I was not successful. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just to comment based on the BBMR Bureau Budget and Management Office, this proposed legislation intends to codify the government of Guam's Executive Order 2020-08, which establishes the COVID-19 differential pay for government of Guam employees. And the differential pay is categorized as the one, 25% for essential employees in direct contact or close proximity to individuals reasonably affected or to be infected with COVID-19, two, 15% differential pay for essential employees who may incidentally come into contact or close proximity to individuals reasonably suspected to be infected with the COVID-19, and then the 10% for essential employees whose positions do not allow them to telework and are mandated to perform their duties at the physical work sites. They noted, Mr. Chair, that based on their correspondence with DOA, the estimated cost for this for the executive branch line agency amounts to $890,000 per pay period, totaling approximately $18.7 million. And it was noted that the governor's budget for COVID-19 relief fund set aside $22 million for line agencies for differential pay in accordance to the executive order. There was an additional $3.3 million that was included to account for unforeseen overtime requests that may arise after DOA pays the differential cost that was estimated. The, Mr. Chair, it also noted that the $22 million noted above was projected from March 14th through December 31st, 2020. And the Bureau notes that their concern is that the funding set aside for differential pay may be fully expended in advance of the December 31st, 2020, as should. And they also noted that based on the proposed bill earlier. So I just want to note for the record, Mr. Chair, that based on the standings, this is what came to us through BBMR, and I want to make sure that, as you noted, I want to make sure it was just mentioned and recorded for record. And I have no questions at this time as I support the efforts.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Amanda Shelton, ma'am, do you have any questions or any comments to me?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no questions for me, but I do recognize that this was an important part of the bill that we passed during the last session, so I'm glad that this is something that we are bringing up now. And I want to also thank everyone who submitted testimony. I believe I saw over 10 emails in support of this bill from many of our frontline workers, our essential workers who have continued to serve during this time. So I do appreciate that and the work of the committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Kelly Marsh, do you have anything, ma'am?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair, well, yeah, it's just us, which is great. I mean, we're here to listen, we are here to be able to read. The testimony and all testimony that's sent in is valuable. It's that opportunity for our community to participate in the process and to have a voice. And it's not always easy to do, so I definitely appreciate that people took the time to think it through and to offer their best analysis or their perspective in the situation. And I do appreciate that we're listening to and hearing all of these today, or bills, because each one of them is an attempt to try to address the situations at hand and figure out what the best situation is. And guiding us throughout all of this has to be figuring out the way to be a responsible employer to balance community concerns and to do it in as responsible a way as possible. As the Guam Women's Chamber had testified earlier, it doesn't make necessarily a lot of good sense if we're not doing it in those kind of responsible ways where we're going forward in a direction that will only lead to potential furloughs later. And then it wouldn't be meeting our or I'm sure the people's intent. So again, thank you for having this so that we can be at least reading through the testimony that was sent in. There were at least, I think, about eight testimonies that were sent in, and they'll be very helpful to this. Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Kelly. Moving along, Senator Jose Pito Turley, sir, do you have anything you would like to bring before this?
Mr. Chair, I just want to say that I support the bill as long as there's money, give it to them. That's all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Senator Therese, go ahead and unmute there you go.
Did you call me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, would you like to make any comment or statement or even ask any question to the author of the bill?
Yes, thanks. I haven't been able to read all the testimony either, but I will read those. I note that this bill is, it is the same as the bill that was sent by the governor to us in her veto message, and that, so this is for the COVID funding, and it makes it retroactive to March 14th. So that, I remember that this is one of her, you know, one of the things that she had asked us was to make that retroactive. So this would be retroactive to March 14th. It's for the differential pay, I think it's described as hazardous pay. And I guess I have a, the questions that I would ask if those representatives were here is, this is in addition to overtime and any other hazardous pay that these employees are receiving at this time? That's one. And the other question would be, so was there a legal determination that this pay is not the equivalent of a bonus that we were told earlier, that the governor is restricted from using CARES money for bonuses? So has that determination already been made? And then, of course, because of the court hearing that's going on right now as we speak, I would ask if this, if this bill is passed, does this pay going to be, and let's say, you know, depending what happens at the court, but if they're successful at court in getting that double pay ordered by the court, then is this on top of that? Or would getting double pay negate this COVID pay? I guess I'm curious about those things, Mr. Chair, so I'm going to continue to ask for DOA's opinion on that and anyone else who you might have available. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Turley, and yes, I'm very curious too and see what's going to happen. And it's just ironic that this bill would basically legalize, is what the governor put out in her executive order, if this bill was to pass. It's just ironic, like you mentioned, the bill that she vetoed, this is what was part of it. And if she had just allowed it, maybe recommend something, it would have made sense. But we'll just move along, let's see, who else is next here? We would have Senator Minority Leader, Senator Telo Tadegui, ma'am.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair, you know, the concern I have here too is, you know, in the executive order number eight, where it establishes the categories of this pay, a differential pay, there was a section on the bottom that was eliminating certain unclassified employees. As you all know, many of the mayor's offices were still open during this time assisting with senior citizens as well as taking any concerns from the public. Scared, scared community, you know, people were coming to them and asking for help or where to go, what to do. So this is an area that we need to look into as well, and I'm hoping to incorporate that the mayor's offices, those unclassified employees are also a part of this. I'm not sure right now if they are getting this pay, but I don't think so. So that is a concern that I have. Of course, the other questions were asked by my previous colleague. How much of this, actually, how much has been paid out currently is a question I have that we're going to have DOA here to tell us. And if that funding that is being paid out now, is it coming from CARES Act? Or is it coming from the general fund to make those payments out right now? So these are questions that I was hoping to get answered, and so pretty much that's it that I have so far. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Minority Leader Senator Telo. Senator Louise Munya, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question for the author, if she can just clarify. So the bill only applies to COVID-19 pandemic and not to any future pandemics or epidemics or even any other public health emergencies. So is it, or what is the purpose, and is it really necessary to enact executive order, this executive order and codify it into law?
What is the first question, Senator Munya?
Actually, the whole question is, so it only applies to COVID-19, not to any future pandemics or epidemics. So is it really necessary to codify Executive Order 2020-08 into law?
That's a good question, because as was mentioned with our previous colleagues, we found it unusual that an executive order was issued with salary changes, which was 25, 15, and 10. And from my understanding with the AG's opinion, it is only the legislature through policy that changes these type, you know, any type of pay, any salary. And so this is to really understand, you know, this codifying it so that we can make sure and ensure that it is retroactive prior to the executive order that was issued. But the question still stands. Maybe our legal and the AG can verify or give separate opinions on that. And I would fully support if you'd like to have the AG opine on the issue, if the governor has the authority to do this, and if we really need to codify it. Thank you.
Yeah, that was basically all my question. I mean, if it were, for example, to include any future pandemics, then I could see why we could, but you're probably just complying for the AG's opinion that we need to be the one to determine the pay issue.
So, well, it's, I'm not trying to comply with the AG's opinion. This is a concern that, you know, the healthcare providers, our nurses, our frontliners receive some kind of hazardous pay differential. And initially, when we started to go into this COVID crisis, I submitted a bill for those that do not receive that 10% hazardous pay. They would be able to receive it, for example, Customs and Quarantine, who was one of the primary agencies who received the travelers coming in from other islands or other countries in other states. And then they would do the initial assessment, and if they found any signs of, any signs of those from the coronavirus, that they were exhibiting certain signs, and they would contact public health. But they were the first line of defense before the virus would enter into our island. And so they were exposing themselves to this. And in any case, they don't receive this hazardous pay. And so we were just trying to find this equity. And then the governor put forth these different categories, the 25, 15, and 10, and just to make it equitable across the board, that during the start of this pandemic, in the height of the pandemic, they received, you know, this just compensation.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Louise, and I'd like to remind my colleagues, if you don't have a copy, please obtain a copy of the Attorney General's statement, his opinion. And the very last sentence is very, I think is the most powerful one. Very last sentence on his opinion says, "The Organiak, in fact, expressly authorized, let's say, to set the compensation of all government Guam employees." With all this, then the question would rise is, is the executive order even legit? And I'm not questioning that yet with the Attorney General, because we have to just move on from there. Senator James Wollin, do you have anything, sir, to say?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think my Uber request or recommendation was accepted, so maybe next time we just got to call 311 to get our answers. But really, I appreciate that the physical note is here, and as my other colleagues do have questions, so do I. But I don't want to ask it to a piece of paper, I need to ask it to people in person. So I know we have a couple more bills that we want to hear. And, you know, they strike one, strike two, maybe they can still, before they get striked out, they'll appear or want to come on our Zoom conference for our next ones. But like the author of the bill, there are questions, and I want clarifications. And I think it's important that we do, because then we can go back, and if this or the other bills need some adjustments, we can do it in committee, so when we come to session, we have something solid. But, you know, what I just heard earlier today that has some great impact on this bill and the other bills is that, you know, the pandemic emergency was extended for another 30 days. So that's 30 days of what kind of payment to the employees that are working. So that's more money, coming from where, I don't know, and how, and which one is going to be paid up? I'm not sure yet either. So questions and questions and questions. So I don't want to ask it to a piece of paper, and I really don't want to call 311. So I'll wait my turn to when somebody comes on that can really answer these questions. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, very much.
Thank you, Senator Jim, and I agree with you, and that's why I anticipate that if these bills are brought forward before the session next week, and in the meantime, I would be expecting that we'll be on the committee of the whole, then we may. And hopefully, we'll get them in person, and then it'll be clarified before we move any further for any of the bills. And then I think that might be the safest time, if they don't respond and participate throughout the day. All right, we have now Senator Mary Comontse Torres. Ma'am, do you have anything, ma'am, you would like to state or?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chair. I think a lot of the issues and concerns and questions have been brought up already by my other colleagues. But I do want to note that I think that it was good of those people to submit testimony. And I will take the time to look at some of the references that they also provided in their testimony, because that'll give us a good sense of exactly what the ramifications of, you know, this type of bill would have in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Senator Castro, Senator Will Castro, you still there? Right, there you go, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions or comments for this bill, but I do want to underscore the concern that my colleague had. You know, when we had a procurement oversight, forgive me, it's unrelated to this bill, but at that very important oversight meeting, you know, key agencies were missing. And again, we can see at this point in time, this is an issue of appropriation and compensation, both of which need to be executed by the executive branch, and again, key agencies are missing. And I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that if it necessitates going into committee of the whole, but I have a difference of a perspective on that. I mean, in my opinion, committee of the whole should be to further inform debate where there may be differences of opinion or additional clarity is needed. But this is a public hearing, and this is where perhaps this concept of discovery or getting the facts and maybe reacting to some of the things that the administration might know can help inform policy. And so, Mr. Chairman, I implore, I plead, I don't know what word you want to use to characterize my frustration, but this is unacceptable. And Madam Speaker, Mr. Chairman, the ruling majority, please, if we can have somebody from the administration come forward and ask these questions, the people of Guam deserve that kind of information and due diligence. And so that's what I want to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Will, and we're fortunate enough, by the time we get to the fourth hearing today, the fourth bill, if they are able to chime in and get on, I would, I will gladly open up the floor to ask them questions on all four bills.
That's appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And that's how, if that's the only way we can do it, then that's where we'll move. There was also one, just to, I think we covered all my colleagues to speak, but we did receive one also, and my colleagues, you should be getting it in the mail, received one more email from Paul Tobias, not in favor of any of the bills, just to mention that. You should be all receiving it, but being that there's, yes, yes, Madam Senator.
Yes, thank you. Just a real quick question, this is the first time reading the fiscal notes, that I noticed there was this comment made by BBMR that the governor has set aside $22 million. I haven't heard anything from the very beginning of all this hazardous pay or what was being paid out. That $22 million was brought up even a week ago or day before yesterday, before we received this fiscal note. And was just wondering if, Mr. Chair, being OFB, that you knew of a $22 million that was set aside? Did you know anything about?
No, we did not know about the 22, the only thing, I think all of us The only thing I think all of us are aware of is how the CARES budget was set up. And if I'm correct, I mean, my memory can't be that bad, but I think it was like $29 million that was first identified for payroll adjustment. So 22, what happened to seven? And that's my only question, and I read to all of you the last sentence of the AG's opinion, that this body is the only body that will set just compensation. That includes differential pay, and I think this bill is perfectly in line of setting that pace. But anything else, maybe double pay, whatever, we set the pace. And until we can all come to agreement of, do we want to give differential, or do we want to start with double pay initially and then jump to differential to finish it off? But then at the same time, as Senator Woin brought up, is that as we continue down this road of executive orders and executive orders and keep dragging on, when does this end? And we can set that pace where you can continue down your executive orders, Governor, but you will only get to pay up to this period, and we can do that. This body is in control of that. So as we move on, and we go down the other bills, we set the pace. So I hope that's pretty clear. Madam Minority Leader, Senator Telo. Thank you. I will now just move immediately to Senator, Madam Vice Speaker. Do you have anything you would like to offer to close? And then we'll adjourn this public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, we did ensure that the mayor's palmitate rules, so that those employees that responded to the COVID, and this is exactly what we did with Bill 326 that was vetoed by the governor. So that is in there. And if there's greater concern, you know, of course, we'd absolutely support that. But we did put in that the mayors and other agencies that are not limited to would be able to promulgate rules for those that did respond to the COVID-19. And I did send out some questions that I had in the previous public hearing for Bill 357. But if you read the questions that we wanted to ask DOA and BBMR, it's applicable to most of these bills, right? The different definitions for between classified and unclassified, the different types of hazardous pay, or different types of differential pay that are being paid, will double pay be paid on top of these different types of differential pay, just so we can get a better understanding. Just to note that some agencies have different types of differential pay, while the nurses don't have the same types of differential pay. And so really, the nurses who are exposed every day in the hospital are really seeing, like was mentioned earlier, this kind of disparity in compensation. And so, Mr. Chair, if DOA and BBMR can come to, you know, the later hearings, either your hearing or the speaker's hearing on 359, we would greatly appreciate that. We advocated for these public hearings and to ensure that we heard the community's responses and concerns, and also so that we can have some, so we can have some more information, so that our colleagues and myself, we could better discern on this issue and really see how the impact will be towards the government, but also towards our island-wide community. And so, Mr. Chair and colleagues, I thank you for your support for this public hearing and not rushing these bills going into emergency session. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice. Senator Pito, go ahead.
You know, the Bill 358 does have addressed the unclassified. We were talking about the mayor's council employees who are unclassified. Bill 358 does address that on the hazardous pay for category one and two. So that's all that I have to say.
Thank you, Senator Pito. There being, I don't see any hands up or anything else, so there being, there's no additional individuals to present further testimony on this bill, but we will continue to receive all written testimonies. And please, as you're prepared, the people of Guam, as you're prepared to send testimonies, please submit it to the mailroom of the Guam Congress Building or through email at senatorjoessen at gmail dot com. I want to thank everyone for their participation in this public hearing. This public hearing is now adjourned. It is now 2:36, and Sisus Massey, and we will begin the next hearing at 4 o'clock for Bill 359. Sisus Massey, thank you. Thank you, colleagues.